Welcome to the City Council meeting this Tuesday evening on January 3. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Hedges.
I believe he's on his way.
Okay, en route. Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom. Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Let's proceed, and I think Rich is on the way. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to our city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise hand feature on Zoom, and you will be called at the appropriate time. If calling via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. And Madam Clerk, will you note, please, that Councilmember Hedges has joined us? We will begin the first of two items on the agenda, which will be closed session. And are, let's see, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item before we convene into closed session? Madam Clerk, would you please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have no hands raised on Zoom, and there's no speaker slips for this item.
Thank you very much. We will now move into the second item on the agenda. Oh, no, we're going to turn this movie, this meeting, and we will be back after the closed session. Thanks for your patience, everyone. We'll begin with the first of two items on the agenda, which will be, oh, I'd already did that one, sorry, excuse me. We will now move to the second item of the agenda, which will be a study session. Item number one is City Council Goal Setting Process Revisions. We would like to invite Denise Garcia, our Management Analyst, up to...
You'll have to settle for me tonight.
Oh, close second.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I'd like to invite our esteemed City Manager, Drew Corbett, to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Good evening, Members of Council. The item before you, as Mayor Lee mentioned, was the City Council Goal Setting and some considerations for process revisions. Next slide, please. So our current goal-setting process is a three-step process. It starts with what we call our Blue Sky Workshop, and this year, the Blue Sky Workshop is going to be on February 11 of 2023. And what we do there is review our current strategic plan, and then council recommends items for addition or removal. The second step of the process is staff then takes that draft initial plan and puts a work plan together for the following year, as well as what the resource requirements would be to execute to that work plan. We receive public comment at a public meeting on the proposed strategic plan. Council makes any additional modifications based on the resource requirements, and then it comes back for step three, which is final approval, which generally happens as a consent calendar item. Next slide, please. So there's a couple of challenges with the current structure. Number one, our strategic objectives have really increased over the years. So we used to go from about a 30-item list, now we're up to 55 items. Fifty-one of them are A-list items, which are items that are resourced, and then four of them are B items, which are not currently resourced. The strategic plan does include lower priority items that are intended for completion in future years that we're not actively working on. Those are our B and our C items. And then some objectives, we've basically baked into operations. They started off as a strategic objective, something we might not necessarily have been doing, and now we've taken them and fully operationalized them and resourced them, and they don't need to necessarily be, continue to be tracked on the strategic plan. So the reason why we're proposing revising the current structure is we really do think it would be good to refocus their strategic plan, to be more visionary in nature, be a little more high-level. Because we have 55 items, right, if you print out the strategic plan, it's six pages. And so if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And I think it's difficult for folks looking at the strategic plan to really get focused. When you see 55 items, you kind of get overwhelmed. So we think one of the big things that we could do to help with that is to remove the operational items, to reduce the number of items on the list, and really highlight the true priorities of the City Council. So that's where we are in terms of why we're here tonight, in terms of proposing changes. So next slide, please, thank you. So the recommended changes to the structure, and again, this is really structural changes and not necessarily changes to the three-step process, which we do think works well. So we'd like to remove the priority levels and only track items that are currently being resourced. As mentioned on the previous slide, we'd like to eliminate having operational priorities on the strategic plan, so we don't think we need to track items that are embedded in the city's day-to-day operations. And so as an example of that, there's a priority on there that's been on there for several years, leverage technology in support of safe and secure neighborhoods. So this started as a strategic plan priority, and over the years, it's been baked into the operations. So we're constantly looking to leverage technology in support of our safe and secure neighborhoods. So at this point, we think it's less of a strategic priority and more of an operational item that we're going to do on a day-to-day basis. We'd also like to recategorize and reorganize the objectives based on the length of time needed to complete them, sort of to better give people and frame sort of how long these priorities are going to go on. So we're proposing three different categories. The immediate term, which would be completion within the fiscal year; medium term, which is completion within two to five years; and then longer term, which would be completion in five-plus years. So moving on to the Blue Sky Meeting process, so the first thing we're going to do is review the current strategic plan. And what we're planning on doing, pending council direction from tonight, is grouping the existing list of 55 into three different buckets. Bucket one is going to be objectives that we're recommending for removal. These are items that have either already been completed, will be completed this fiscal year, or are already embedded in the city's operations, as I mentioned. The second bucket of objectives will be those that we recommend remain as strategic objectives. And these are things that are required to do by law, are statutory, or we've already put so many resources into them over the years that it wouldn't make a lot of sense to stop doing them. Items that are going to be on this list, I think, are going to be pretty obvious, right? The general plan, the clean water program, the smooth streets, things that, again, are statutory or things that we've put a significant amount of resources into already, and it wouldn't make sense to take them off. And then the last bucket is going to be everything else. And there's going to be, these are remaining priorities that either we haven't started yet, or we haven't put significant resources into, so if council wanted to change direction, it would not be difficult to do so. I think there'll be, this one will be the most interesting bucket, because it will be tempting to say, well, let's keep all of them on, because they're all really important things, and that's fine. But then, as we move into the next slide, Patrice, that could limit the number of new priorities that we can take on, because, right, we can do, we can do anything, we just can't do everything. So for the new objectives for consideration, which will need to compete with existing objectives that stay on the list, each council member may propose new objectives to add to the strategic plan, excuse me. There will need to be at least three people in agreement that that item belongs on the strategic plan, and we have a deadline of about two weeks from now for submitting those new objectives to staff. We are looking for the new objectives to focus on the issue, focus on the priority, so the what, not necessarily the how. Staff will then develop a work plan to address it and identify the resource requirements required to execute it. Next slide. And then a few important dates, as I mentioned, January 18 is when new objectives will be due to staff. We're going to plan on publishing the agenda packet for the Blue Sky Workshop about a week in advance, so that'd be February 3. And then the workshop itself is going to be on February 11. And with that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Before we deliberate, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have no speaker slips on this item, and I'm checking for hands raised. If you intend to comment on the strategic planning session item, please raise your hand on Zoom now. And I have no hands raised. No speakers.
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for comments. Would anyone like to start with any questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lee. City Manager Corbett, just in understanding, removing the priority levels in it, it says that these are items, no longer tracking items to be worked on in future years, is your recommendation. So there might be, if there's something that's very important, perhaps strategically, but we don't see that we can get to it for five years, that might wind up in that type of bucket? I'm trying to understand.
That's correct, yes.
And if that's the case, would it be possible to somewhere have a virtual parking lot? Because someone might think of having a great idea that we just can't get to for a while, but we don't want to lose sight of it.
Yeah, that's certainly possible. Again, I would like to avoid adding it to the strategic plan, but certainly, if council has an interest in doing something like that, what we could do is track items that didn't make the list, and when the list goes out again the next year to add new objectives, you could be reminded, here are the, you know, the five or six things that didn't make the list as a priority item, so they could be considered for future years, then they would just need to be brought back up.
Right, just to sort of, if somebody's done a lot of thinking to have that access, that would be great. And then number two, in terms of eliminating operational priorities, I guess my question would be, how could we understand, if we took those off the list because they were operational, what percentage of resource would remain? Right, so if I'm thinking, I have three new ideas that are fantastic, but I don't know whether taking everything out means we only have 20% of resource left?
So 0%.
Okay.
Because we've operationalized them, so we're still resourcing them. And so what we try, so, sorry, if I'm not understanding your question.
I just wasn't clear. I think if, let's say, 10 of the operational, objectives are operational, and we decide we want to take them out, that equates to 80% of our current budget or resources, then that, that means we might have 20% left, or we're going to have to find incremental revenue for new priorities.
So I think that, thank you for the clarification. I think that process happens as we, as we go through the second step in the process, which is actually identifying the resources that required. So to your point, 90% of what we do is day-to-day operations, so we don't have a ton of capacity to take on new things. With that said, when we do take on new things, it doesn't necessarily mean something is not going to, we're going to have to take something off. What it usually means is, we're going to ask, what's a priority? Because we're going to do one before we do the other, right? So as an example, you know, I'm looking at the city attorney. In many cases, in the strategic plan, we get at least a couple of items each year that are development of an ordinance for something, which is going to typically fall on the city attorney to write that ordinance. It doesn't mean we need to hire another staff to do that, right? The resources are, we're going to absorb it within the existing amount of resources, most likely, in the city attorney's office, but it does mean that he will have to reprioritize certain work and determine, you know, how that's all going to get done. Everything will get done, it's just not all going to get done at the same time. So it's, I wish I could give a very quantitative answer to that question, but it's going to depend on what you're asking to do. Some stuff that we do is going to be, it's going to, we're going to need to bring in a consultant, and we're going to have an idea about how much that consultant's going to cost and how much staff time it's going to take to manage that consultant. That's pretty, you know, pretty straightforward. So then it just becomes a matter of funding. Do we have the funding to accommodate that? So I wish I could give you a better than it depends, but it really is going to depend on what kind of items come up as new objectives. But I will say, over the years, we've done a good job, and we've been in good economic times, we've been able to absorb the priorities that council has been most interested in.
Thank you very much.
So perhaps we have something that's operational, but we think there's a better way to do it, or we need some changes in it. Can we then that, bring that for priority?
Sure.
Okay, that's good news.
Similar, in a similar vein, I think that for those, you know, folks who are new to strategic planning, it's really, you know, it's, I think it will be an iterative process, and there can be goals that we set that are high-level, focusing on the what, and also the benefit of us all being residents and having lived experience in this community, we also have opinions and insight, and really a lot of value to add into how, right? How we can do things better.